Good evening. Welcome to our August Township Supervisors Meeting. I'll call the meeting to orders this time. And I invite you to join the board as we stand and pledge the flag. I pledge the oath of the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. Okay, at this time, I have the roll call.
Barry Long.
Here.
Arthur Zerbi.
Here.
David Lambach.
Here.
Mike Reiner.
Here.
Elizabeth McGovern.
Here.
Carol Martin.
Okay, we have a lot of things on our agenda tonight, so I want to keep this focused and moving. This is our time for a public comment session. We also immediately after our public comment session will have a conditional use hearing. So during that process, we'll get the opportunity to speak concerning that. So you also have a chance to ask questions and state your opinion at that time. So if there's anything outside of the conditional use hearing. And I limit you to four minutes, so we do not exceed that. Does anyone want to, yes, state your name?
David Spees. We own a property on the Hookahaw Golf Course that was now Landmark's development. And we had a tenant complain about the grass not being cut. There's some spots around there that don't really belong to anybody other than Landmark. So I'm just curious, when the development is finally really finished, who's going to cut some of these little spots of grass? Because I don't know who owns the land here for Landmark. Will they still be responsible for cutting it? There's little slurs of grass here and there. Like next to our house, we were by the 17th, so there was a fence, the 17th. There's some shrubbery, then there's another little piece of grass. And I don't know who owns that land, you know?
But their residential tracks, they're not owned by...
Well, they would be owned by someone. They would either be an individual lot owner, or they would be part of an HOA perhaps as part of the open space. So usually, once everything gets dedicated, then that turns over to either the HOA and/or the individual property owner at that point. Not familiar with which piece you're talking about.
Yeah, but it's also, a lot of the property is just like, it's like field grass, it makes it really long. And at some point, when they start to build, it has to be cut down. You know, it's, I'm not sure what's going to be left, or what isn't going to be left, you know what I mean? So...
I'd say file a complaint with the zoning officer and, um...
Let him go, okay? Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else guess? Go ahead, state your name.
Me and my wife drove in the, came through a big property yesterday past week, just to see what's going on there a little bit. The dorms, the gate was open, and I got in mind now, I see them fields that are filled up with weeds. Why wouldn't somebody, farmer, rent that down, throw something in there? It's good fields, I picked corn there from Jim River, a brew baker, and they give a lot of good corn. And another thing, you know, if you had somebody farm and put hay in or whatever, you get your weeds cut, then you can forage your weed, or you can forage your weed, or if you have some of your own property, I can't see how you could.
I know we did have a farmer mowing egg hay. Do you have anything to add, Art?
Well, I wanted to take those fields in a different direction years ago, and we were on the right track for a while. I wanted it all to grow back to natural, to the wildlife. There was deer in there, unbelievable. And then they went and mowed it down.
Somebody mowed the hay better, not for hay, they didn't...
The farmer that mowed the crop fields, going into Brew Baker Farmhouse, is he going to culerate them fields, or no? Just...
No hay.
Just mowed it. I guess the only thing, and bailed it.
Of course. You know, artists and people, they don't knock that, they cultivate, but he uses, the hay mowers, I'm not sure, but he took it off.
Robert Zerman took the fence down, he's using, they're making hay.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. Robert Zerman had a fence there, and I took that down, he's making it for hay.
Some farmer, he did a good, good line for it. He put out, then, you ask for how the weeds, you learn how to put it, there's a lot of stuff, you have to do your work, I don't know what's on, but it's believable. When you pay for rent, if you're renting the house, and there you spend a lot of money without the hay, the house, and this farm, then you'd be, be ready to, yeah, independent now.
Well, I know, I know, I know in the past, the neighbor had made hay, although you're saying it doesn't make good hay anyway.
Not in the hay anymore.
Um, there's, yeah. We have a park and rec committee, which we appoint to oversee that. And we would look to them for direction on managing that property. And so I would recommend just go to them and see if they have some ideas that they want to do with it.
Yeah, well, I see even more out of anger than I'm... Then, I thought a month ago, you want to know, about a year ago, I was back there on the park property on Ash Town Road, and it's new to run, little there. I know it's wet land, it's wet there, and that small strip along the upper end there on Ash Town Road, there's about a neighbor there, I guess, that might, that was farmed still, I'm remembering that corn in there. And it's all riddled up in brush and weeds, and the other people over the side, putting chong in there, I think it's a shame. Some people say they're proud of our park plan, the lion cried at it, or stuff like that. And I was, I was saying, offering to clean it up a little bit, take some of the brush off, I'm getting too old, doing something like that, I guess to get any help. But, I think so, could be dominated by that.
You're talking going down Ash Town Road from 897 on the right-hand side?
I'm talking on 625.
Well, okay, you come in on 625, it'll be on the left. Okay.
A small strip, behind the...
I wanted to do something with that. I got ahold of the Dexter County Conservation District. I wanted to clean out, put a real nice picnic area in there. They told me to leave my hands off of it. Leave it as a riparian zone, or whatever you call it. Natural. Okay. No, I was, I was told by Rebecca Buchanan. Yeah. Leave your hands off of it.
I have another thing to say, I tend to always talk to Palmer Harding, with his township residents all his life, he was a township supervisor, and he wrote Master Herb in the picture of his sisters, you know what he used to say? Well, you might as well give it back to the Indians.
Okay, that's all right. Thank you, Levi. Anyone else? At this time, we're going to conduct a zoning hearing for a conditional use hearing. We have a horsemagor here tonight that's going to record the meeting. And we're going to run it like a zoning issue. We're going to have our solicitor persuading the legal, how the legal technicalities have been met. Then we'll invite the applicant to summarize their requests to the board. The board and the solicitor will, if they have any questions for the applicant. After the board has no questions, and the audience will be given time to ask questions to the applicant. And I'll repeat that, we have time to ask questions. When we're done with the questions, then you'll be able to, a chance to make a statement or offer an opinion on behalf of the board. After you do that, the applicant will have a chance to respond to your comments, and then the board will deliberate after that.
Yeah, I am asking one question of each. Looking at the rest of the agenda after that, it won't, that part won't be too bad, but down here in paying the bills, if we get approved paying the bills now, look at this stack of the bills I got...
Well, I think that we're a zonographer, it's going to be here for the whole meeting, or just the conditional use hearing?
All we have to do is approve paying the bills, and I could be signing on that discord here and...
That's all we have to do. Did you get a chance, okay, I'm fine with that. Did you have a chance to review the bills? Was there any comments or questions on any of the bills? I, I had a question on the truck, I guess Andy's not here, what, we spent $5,000 to fix up the, one truck? It was, who does the truck work, the front end?
Was it Rule?
Yeah.
Frame and alignment.
Rule, the R, the R's.
It would be under the C, maybe the last page.
Oh, okay. Last page. $4,988 for the 1996 front end.
Yeah, it was, um, to replace the front springs, they were rubbing, so they had to replace the front springs, the shackle hangers pins, U-volts, the whole wheel bearings, seals and everything.
Okay.
And I do think he looked at a second option, but it was much more expensive.
Okay, the bills for August, we paid from the general fund, are $128,906.16. The light fund is $4,440.36. And the state funds, our state fund is $156,431.17, for a total this month of $289,389.69.
I make the motion that we approve the bills for the month of August at $289,389.69.
Okay, David, we had a motion to approve the bills, and it was seconded in the paper's eye.
Aye.
Motion, Barry.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll continue back on our conditional use hearing. And can you verify that the, that the posting advertised...
Yeah, sure. Just for the record, this is a place and time designated by notice to consider the application of RJS Investments LLC to permit the construction of two to four unit apartment buildings on a property owned by RJS Investments LLC, located at 1399 Bowmanville Road in Brecknock Township, Lancaster County pursuant to Section 110-22 of the Brecknock Township zoning ordinance. Before proceeding any further, I want to ask if there's anyone in the audience tonight that wishes to be a party in this proceeding? The applicant is automatically a party, the township is also a party, but if you're an adjacent property owner or affected by this project, you have the right to be a party in this proceeding, which would also allow you to offer testimony by witnesses, and also offer evidence to the board and testify. You could also appeal the decision of the board. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to enter their appearance in this matter as a party? And if so, please let me know at this time. If not, if you have any comments, as the chairman stated, we will entertain comments from you as a conclusion, but we will not, that will not be part of the record as testimony or evidence, because you won't be entered as a party to this proceeding. Anyone? Okay, here I know one, then I'll move on to let you know that the public notice of this hearing was advertised in the paper on July 24, 2018, and July 31, 2018. Adjointing property owners were notified by mail of this hearing on July 18, 2018. The property was posted with the notice of the hearing on August 1, 2018. Hearings and any appeals to the board's decision are governed by the Pennsylvania Municipal ity's planning code. The supervisors have 45 days after the last hearing in this proceeding to render their decision. At this time, the township will offer the following exhibits in the evidence. The application for conditional use of RJS Investments LLC, which includes the application, the actual percy surveying letter dated June 21, 2018, and the plan. That is exhibit one. Exhibit number two is the notice of the hearing. Exhibit number three is the proof of publication of notice in the newspaper. Exhibit number four is the affidavit of mailing to adjacent owners. Exhibit number five is the affidavit of posting of property. Exhibit number six is the technicon letter of July 19, 2018, to the planning commission. Exhibit number seven is the draft minutes of July 23, 2018, of the planning commission. And exhibit number eight is the Brecknock Township zoning ordinance. Does the applicant have any objection, because you are a party in this proceeding, to exhibits one through eight being admitted in evidence at this time? Okay. So those exhibits will be admitted into the evidence and into the record. And at this time, I would ask whoever's going to testify on behalf of the applicant, be sworn in by the court reporter, and will proceed with your testimony.
There was another document that was submitted along with the information and application, which was the elevation use of the bill, is that also included?
Yes, that was included, thank you. Thank you, Black.
Mr. Roger, would you please come forward? My name is Ron Hershey, I'm on percy surveying. This is Ron Sauer, RJHS Investments.
Okay. First, where both of you in?
Hearing, right. You serve first, pleasure, hold it, and then the ledger.
I do.
He wants to proceed first.
I'll get the heck out of here. As I said. Good evening, my name is Ron Hershey, I'm on percy surveying. Tonight before you is stated as conditional use application, we're going to pull this up. Property is located at 1399 Bowmanville Road, we're right across from Sauer's garage. If you remember, 18 months ago, there was a home that was there, like that, it burned down, it was on this property, existed in this location, right about the central part of that lot. On the demise of home, this is about, what to do with the lot, it's about a one-acre lot. Property has been, I'll say renovated in some sort, the building's been removed to some extent, and it's cleaned up. In the meantime, we go in for the zoning hearing board, requesting for this type of use as a variance, a use variance for the property. We redirected by the township and by discussions to submit for petition for rezoning of this area. It was residential low, now it's residential medium, as part of a resolution of spring of 18. So with that being said, according to the zoning ordinance, this would be a permitted use within the residential medium district as part of the conditional use hearing, and that brings us here to tonight. So what is being proposed is two, two building units, each with four apartment units, proposed parking area, 16 parking spaces. It would be very similar to what you would see as a local resident along Maple Grove Road, just west of 625, that was put in in about 2008, 2009. There's one building with eight apartment units in that, that's on six tenths of an acre, and this is about a one-acre lot. So even though there's two buildings and there's eight units, this is almost twice the size, which is the area for the building. We would be all the criteria based on our sketch, proposed lot coverage, proposed parking and the ordinance, those types of things. So we wouldn't be going through variance, as it relates to setbacks, or density, or lot coverage, or anything like that, from the hearing board. The applicant, or the part of the conditional use application process is outlined within the ordinance. There's a few sections that I'll just bring to your attention. We would inform with all of those sections, those sections would relate, if you would allow me to, one second, I'll pull the section of the ordinance I'm referring to. For residential medium, this would be a conditional use application under 110-21C, or, excuse me, 110-21B3, which would be, as it relates to apartments within that district there, we have compliant with three sections, 110-39, 110-72, and 110-74, 1A, within the zoning ordinance. Those particular sections that the ordinance would reply to, would apply as follows. 110-39 would be residential uses, and that item, that lists A through F items. Within those, within those items, F would be the one item that we are working on currently as it relates to adequacy of water supply. I'm going to flip this, this is the conditional, this was part of the application, this was the plan that was used as part of the application. So you would have a copy of this, I'm going to flip to a little bit different view, just a color view of the same plan. It's a little larger, so you can see the improvements that'll be on the property there. So these properties will be served by public sewer and by on-lot well. And I'll let the applicant discuss a little bit about the well situation, as to how the water supplies will be taken care of. But in your ordinance, in 110-39F, there's a requirement to comply with 110-72 in the ordinance, which refers to the adequacy of the water supplies. We will be going through that process as it relates to quantity of water, and quality of water. Basically, the main criteria is this is a quantity thing. So for a property of this sort, which I had just talked, spoken with a geologist today a little bit, he gets the background information. With a day tank that would be adequate for peak flow times, evening and morning, of roughly about 1,000 gallons, supply on the well would really only do about five, six gallons a minute to keep up with demand for eight liters. There is extensive detail in the ordinance as to what's required for the, for the water testing for quantity. And again, he's working through that with township's consultants as it relates to water That's the information that will be forthcoming to the board beyond this conditional use hearing. We've had talks with council as well, and decided to continue to go through this process, knowing that likely the board would be unable to make a decision tonight on this based on that adequacy. And I think council could discuss that, however we want to do it with the board, knowing that if that's a condition that needs to be met, then we'll continue this on to the next step, next month for the decision, as it stands. That is one thing that needs to be discussed yet. Roger, could you discuss a little bit what your plans are on the water part?
They were hoping within the next two weeks or so, it was to be a drill well. And I guess it would be the final well that we'd be using, but...
What, I mean, how are you going to supply the water?
Well, how, one well, one well is the plan. I was, I've been getting conflicting reports from everybody I talked to. One person thought, oh, you should have two wells, and the person that threw them in the test was saying, I was simply one well, seems like a waste of time. I'm not opposed to two wells, but he felt it was just a lot of waste of effort and money, basically. He felt one well was adequate.
I guess what I'm referring to is you're going to have a water supply on site, that water supply will go to a treatment facility of some sort, or...
Data, data tanks.
Whatever it might be needed.
So there'll be a small, I don't know, like a lead to or something, when we end up one building, where we're going to have essentially a pump house, or we have a large storage and treatment all within that very small area, but...
And there's regulations on that, state regulations on that as well, that you need to comply with, and you end up having a problem complying with those types of criteria and regulations that, that, so that would be how the water, how the water could be supplied here. So that there, so it runs down Maple Grove there, again, that would be piling through and fastly request to the land development process, which would be the next process after the conditional use hearing here. Likewise, obviously stormwater would be evaluated, we'd have preliminary numbers. As part of this process, as for your benefit and for the people who are listening benefit, as part of this process, there's certainly buildings that needs to happen, so that way when we come before the board and request a conditional use, that there are not significant design changes to be put in what's been presented and approved in the conditional use hearing stage and the land development stage. So we've gone through those processes in terms of, these two areas here will be adequate for additional stormwater facilities as part of the Brecknock Township stormwater ordinance as well. This is just our point that we, the name of it sits on the lot, sorry about here, that we go south, go head south, and we utilize this overflow type situation. And again, in compliance with the Brecknock Township stormwater ordinance, and volume rates, and quality, and that kind of stuff. So those things have been addressed, that at least looked at, and as it would apply to the land development and layout of the lot. So getting back to the ordinance, the sections, other sections that it is referring to, within this requirements for conditional use, should have more sticky names on here, I can find more things. So 110-39 I talked about, which is related to residential uses, manufacturing, manufactured homes, there's some items there, I won't go over those, all those items. The only one that would really, only ones that would really kind of pertain to us is the number of glowing units that would be attached together, which is 10 for townhouses, and 12 for apartments, we would comply with both of those. And then ida baht, as I mentioned, with adequacy for water. The next section there would be 110-72. 110-72 refers to the adequacy of water supply in more detail, and gives the information as to what's, what's required as far as the, as the testing would go. And then the final one would be 110-74, 1A, which goes through the process of the standards and conditions that would be, would be implied for a conditional use. So that's, that's the ordinance. There are some things under that 110-74, one, standards for conditional use that pertains, such as parking requirements in the ordinance, such as signage and loading, and those types of things, and screening. And then again, those items would be addressed at land development process through, through those steps that would be required at that time with land development. One thing I'll bring to your attention, as we look at this, is just so you can see the surrounding property, so I'll give you a little feel for what's around there, for those of you who go drive past this on a regular basis. To the south and to the west of the property is an existing mobile home park. It's there, it's been there for a number of years, within the community. Again, that was part of the rezoning of residential medium, and we're in compliance with its use. To the north is a vacant lot, that had a few fruit trees on it, that's on one town.
Yeah, not anymore.
And that would be, that would be just in the north of this. There's a sharp bend in Bowmanville Road to the north, it hits, it's north from this site, and then we hit west. So the lots are not really deep on the, on the north side of this. As you go north and to the west, there are a few residential lots, there's residential lots, single-family residential homes. Again, they were part of the rezoning as well, they were not a good... They were not compliant before in residential low, which really has a related to lot size. Now in the residential medium, they are compliant with size, so they're fairly small lots for residential homes. As you can see, the way we addressed the parking, the way we looked at parking, we faced all the parking spaces towards the building, so that way screening of headlights and whatnot would be kind of away from any residential uses, even residential to the south, which would be the mobile home park. That way parking would be more conducive to the area, more conducive to the district than not. It would probably be blinding neighbors as they're watching Monday night football in their house. Anyway, so that's some of the considerations we've had here as well, that we did those layouts on. Any questions from the board that would relate to this?
Yeah, I have a question. What's the density that this would be concerned? She said it's a little more than our neighbors.
Yeah, I think, I think the requirement for the water testing...
So my next question is, do you know what Lancaster County's new comprehensive plan, what they're recommending or encouraging the density to be?
I don't know.
Okay.
If these are rhetorical questions, please, please fill in the blanks.
No, I don't know. I thought it was, I thought Lancaster County's plan was encouraging the townships to reach a density of seven lots, seven billion...
Seven units per acre.
No one seemed to give me additional backing on that. I think I asked Levi at the planning commission meeting, and I don't know if he followed up on that. Seven or seven and a half is what the county is recommending. They're really pushing to increase density in the township, so we build up and tighter and not out.
Do you, you know what your water supply off the top of your head requires? It's a certain... I was thinking it was a little lower number than what I was expecting. I think it was six, somewhere in that seven range or maybe it's eight. This is, this would be a little more than, a little less than eight, because it's the lot size.
A little, little under an acre.
Yeah, it's 42,000 square feet, so it's a little under an acre in lot size, a little at eight minutes. So I was thinking it was somewhere around seven. I can't put my finger on it just, just now. I know, I know that if you look back in the community and some developments that were done, the most recent one that comes to my mind where this came to play was Maple Ridge South. They have, it would be the one that would be on the north of 625, north of Lauchtown Road, west of 625, where they have some apartments and some mixed units, some townhouse units, and also some single-family dwellings there on the lower side there. They were required, I believe, when they had gone through their process for that, they had also done conditional use for their apartments there, that they had gone through that water supply calculation as part of theirs. And I don't know if it was any more recent than that. Yes, we would be, we would be going in that direction as to what you're referring to as far as the density and the acres and that. Again, it's a residential medium district, again, the mobile home right there. The criteria within the ordinance is met, as I would see it, as it would relate to the conditional use applications. I will show you, just as a matter of public record, some views of what these buildings are supposed to be looking like. This is probably, this is going to be a front view. You can see they would have, each have a main door entrance off of the front with a small porch area. So you'd have four units on each, each of the two buildings that have four units. They would have a rear patio type thing in the back, some storage for the units as well of ash. This is, this would be the well, excuse me, the end unit there, this would be the well pump house that they were referring to. Again, we're not sure if we need two of those, if we just need one, but those will be all worked out. This is the water testing, the requirements of the water. You guys would, this is the first floor plan. You just have a living room down here on the first floor, walkout to the patio in the back. Water room again, as we talked about here in the back, on off the side. They have a half bath downstairs. Downstairs would be three bedrooms, one suite bathroom for the master and a shared bathroom for the other two bedrooms. So you have a three bedroom, two and a half bath, nice units. They're family-related, not necessarily something that you'd probably get in a single, a single of the rents, but for some nice units here. So again, we just have the area, built area if it was there.
I know in the engineer's review letter, they indicated, Mike indicated regarding the traffic impact study, be supplied. Have you analyzed the traffic?
We, we have had some discussions with the consultant we're working with for land development, the harbor engineering at this point. Had some discussions with them. They didn't necessarily feel that with the mobile home park there and this, that this would be a very dramatic jump in that. We can look at that, and we would address that if that's something that we would be required to do so. Again, we'd probably look to do that during the land development stage, if there's any related traffic impact study that might need to be done. Again, we didn't go into a lot of detail on that.
How about the lighting, the lighting plan?
Again, lighting plan, this is a fairly rural area. This is a residential medium. What we would probably propose would be some sort of site lighting for the parking area, maybe two lights in, you know, in one course, and then in the other course, the middle part here. We prefer not to go with a wall-off type approach to blanket it, but we do want to have some lighting, obviously, to the apartment area and facilities there. Would be possible some lighting that would be on the front, so each of the units, we would illuminate the sidewalk areas, which is why we kind of look at this area here and over here, one of the anchors, one over here, kind of the star of the corner, it would kind of brighten that up a little bit. If each of the units had, again, if you can remember the front elevation, you'd have a set of doors here, and a set of doors here, likewise, a set of doors here, and a set of doors here. If they each had a sound light or something that would be a dusted dome in front of each of those porches, they would, again, cover the growing spots between the two apartment areas. So again, the land development stage, just we're looking closer into the apartments that create the lighting, as we said before. What we've noticed is that, uh, your apartment lighting for the apartment area.
I know the planning commission, like, if they had a concern about the screening on that, I believe it was on the southern side?
Yeah, there were two issues that the planning commission brought up. One was the screening. There's a portion of the southern boundary that is not screened, as you can see on the diagram here.
This would be the area that was approached by stormwater facility.
Right, that they had some concerns about providing some screening along that property portion, not necessarily the entire perimeter, because there is existing vegetation. And then akin to what you just said about the irradiated traffic study, there were some concerns about what happens when everyone is home and there's not enough parking for the person who has, you know, family over, there's no provisions for an overflow parking area. There are, it does comply with the ordinance, there's two spaces minimum for each unit.
And two extra.
And two extra. There are three, three-bedroom homes, which we didn't have that information for the planning commission meeting. That was one of the questions that came up, was how many bedrooms were in the units? So there could be a concern of maybe not providing the additional spaces that may be necessary in the event of a birthday party or some kind of event that folks have on the property as far as parking is concerned.
Has there been any issues with the existing apartments that are on Lauchtown Road with, as it relates to parking? I know as a local resident, I go past there quite often, since obviously we started this process, I've been noticing going past there, like, parking, 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 because they have 18 spots. They also have eight units that would be there. I haven't seen any issues with parking. There's usually spaces that are open.
There is a difference in that there is on-street parking over there, which this would not...
No, there's not on-street parking.
Well, you can park on the street over there.
Not on Maple Grove Road, you can't.
On the eastern streets you can.
No, no, I'm talking about, no, 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 not, okay, yeah, I'm not talking about Maple Grove North. I'm talking about the apartments that would be on Maple Grove Road, west of 625. There's a very similar unit that's there.
I'm not familiar with that.
That's rank, that's rank property, yeah, yeah. Trying to go into the fire hall.
Okay.
It's a smaller area, they have eight units and 16 spaces.
Yeah, and it was a concern, as I mentioned, by the land.
I was just, was kind of wondering if there was any issues with that. I don't know what kind of units, to your point, I don't know how many bedrooms they have.
I don't either.
They're stacked, so they can't probably hold two items or anything.
Okay, we're done with questions from the board? Okay, this time we'll open up the floor. You may ask the applicant questions. Remember, this is a zoning issue. They're here tonight because this is a conditional use under the zoning. They're not asking for a waiver for stormwater. They're not asking for a waiver on any type of land development. That'll have to do its normal course, and not have to meet all the zoning requirements for that. This is purely a zoning issue of density. And whether or not the board will allow townhouses and apartments to be placed as they are. So if anyone has any questions, just state your name, and you're free to ask the question to the applicants. Okay, I don't see any questions. So before this board deliberates, the board does have the right to add reasonable conditions to any approval. So this is the time, if you do have something you'd like to express to this board, a concern, or you want to make a statement concerning something other than zoning, or something about this property you want the board to be aware of, or should take into consideration, this is your time to make a public statement of your opinion. Okay, that means we'll close the floor, and the board will deliberate, or if we do have some issues, what do you want to explain, how we can handle it?
Actually, we can't close the record at this time, because they still need to supply the works that are pursuant to the section that we had discussed previously, and that you had indicated would probably be, you would submit that at the next month's meeting.
Prior to this next month's meeting.
Right. So that has to be reviewed by the township engineer according to your zoning ordinance, and has to meet the engineer's approval before the board can render its decision on that. So what I would recommend is that we continue, because we can't close the record at this time, so that we don't have to advertise it again. We put on the record that we're continuing the hearing until next month's meeting, which I have to ask Carol to give me the date for that meeting. That at that time, we would get, they would give the study before that meeting to Technicon, Mike would review it, and if it's adequate, then that would be part of, that would be entered into the record at the next month's hearing, and then you could deliberate at that time.
Okay, but as far as, at that time, we wouldn't have, we wouldn't have a public hearing again?
No, no. It would just be limited to the introduction of that exhibit in the record. And if Mike had any comments via a review letter or any testimony, that would be limited to that next month's hearing. He would be able to provide us with a review letter and or review testimony.
So the motion would be...
Okay.
I have one question. Obviously, there's a review component that goes along with this submission for the work study that we haven't received yet. I guess my question would be, when do you anticipate that water study being submitted? Because usually those things are of a technical nature, take some time to turn around or review.
So we've been, we've been in talks with, the name is Steve Smith, I'm going to say Eric, but that's not correct. Fred?
Yes, Fred Eber.
That's not the movie, you guys.
No.
That's it. Sorry. So we've had discussions within our consultant, Jeff Oliver, the Becker Engineering geologist, that's had discussions within as to the requirements that are there. There's been some back and forth, but this happens to some of the issues that are on. So that's in process. So I would imagine, and you may have had some conversations within IPOP today, I know things are ready to go, it's kind of ending about, are we doing well, are we not doing well, what are we using there? So that's been part of the conversation that we've had, so we would anticipate it being very forthcoming with the water testing that we have, so again, that would be, that's all my thoughts.
Forthcoming.
So what we can do is, well, if Mike has enough time to review everything, I mean, we are continuing it to next month. If we have to continue it after that, we'll have to do it at that time. But at least now we won't have to re-advertise what's being stated at the next month's meeting is...
September 11.
September 11, 2018, at 7:00 PM. This hearing will be continued until that date, with the understanding that you will be submitting that information regarding the water testing and water study, which is required for 110, I believe, section 72 of the zoning ordinance, to the engineer prior to that hearing for his review and comment. You will then be coming to the next month's hearing to provide that also as an exhibit into which we will admit into evidence, and also any review letters or any testimony being offered by Technicon at that time. Then the board can deliberate, but we will be closing public comment at this time on the application.
Okay, so does that require a motion at this point to continue the meeting?
Yes.
So I'll offer the motion that we'll continue this meeting and refrain from making a decision on this conditional use until we receive the required, requested information on this storm study, stormwater study, and the other comments, or the township engineer's review letter. Motion was made in second. Does anybody say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Roger.
Yeah, I thought you said Maple Ridge North. Yeah, you said Maple Ridge, and the apartments, I immediately went that way.
That's what I thought you said.
Right.
Okay, let's keep things moving here. Our next owner agenda is a guest, Lon Hershey with Horst Outdoor Power.
Good evening. So this is a power on 625. Property is located at 851, it would be just north of Rubacher Excuse me, it's over the hill there on the left-hand side and the west side of 625. Out front, the, is the shop and the display area, and the rear is the mechanics area that where they do the service and whatnot in the back of the building. Stone parking area along the east side, north side, and west side of the property. What they're looking to do, if you've ever been in the back of that, they have all their customer mowers kind of sitting out back there. They are screened, sort of, but they are outside, back there. There is also the new mowers that come in that are on halos and whatnot, stacked in the back as well, what you can see kind of through on the north side of the building, back in the back. They like to get them undercover, they like to get them under roof. They're not proposing this facility for work, for shop. Their area would still be in the back of the building, this would just be for storage for new, new mowers and equipment that's dropped off by customers. No, no new employees as part of this, no expansion of the facility, merely just to get under roof of what's there already now, sitting out in the back. Been talking with the township staff, or the township engineer, there's been, the whole back is stone. There has been some areas that have been, shall we say, creep over the years, in the back that has been expanded and whatnot. Essentially, as part of the ordinance, there necessarily would not be a requirement for stormwater based on what he's doing here, with the exception of it being commercial in land development. Mr. Horst, it's about a 40-acre property, it's not close really to any other facilities or any buildings that would be near there. To the south, there's adequate space from the south, there would be a drainage area that, you know, the sheet flow down towards the farm in the back. that, you know, the sheet flow down towards the farm in the back. We are proposing to put in stormwater facilities as part of, or in conjunction with, in compliance with, the small projects component of this direct on township stormwater ordinance as it would relate to the entire roof of this property. So even though there's no stormwater now for what's there, Mr. Horst is very willing to put in stormwater facilities that would account for basically a two-year storm event for the roof of the building. Details on the plan, it would be a stone infiltration pit, roof drains going down with leaf guards, cleanhouse perforated pipe, it would be here along this backside as well. There would be some small grading along this overside, which would be off of the stone area that's existing. The stone area exists right now, kind of in this area, which you can see the limit of disturbance is this dotted line right here, where there'd be a little bit of pulling up of some stone that's there now and just receiving that. And then down here, there'd be a small fill area where the bank would come down as the property, as the pool barn would be there. No grading on the site as it would relate to where the footprint of the building is, it'd just be a stone, big stone floor in the, in this, I believe. Make it pretty concrete, pick it stone up. Uncertain on that one, but it would be at grade, what's there now would be just at grade. So there's sure there's disturbance there essentially of what the stone is. So I think tonight we would be looking for a waiver of land development criteria in lieu of, or as an alternative, we would be proposing, again, a small project stormwater approach for the proposed storage facility at the back.
Okay, you want to move this site?
I know the site, but we have the engineer that has to know the rules.
Yeah, the planning commission, we talked about this, and what we look for as far as waiver of land development is the impact, obviously, because it's, we're basically putting everything that's outdoor storage inside a structure. There's no increase in employees, there's no increase in water use or sewage use or any of those things. I talked to Bronn about this maybe two months ago or so, and I had suggested maybe looking at some stormwater for the site, just because it was built without stormwater at the time it was built, which I suggested the small projects approach, which he has incorporated here. Planning commission did feel that it met all the warrants of a waiver for land development, provided they follow the small projects application, and provide that stormwater as Ron's shown on the plan. So from that standpoint, given the scope of this project, they felt that it met the conditions for waiver.
As Ron was speaking, maybe I caught that wrong.
I've said a few things wrong.
No, no. You said about the stormwater facilities, a two-year?
So the ordinance itself, the ordinance itself is broken into two major components. One would be a full load of stormwater plant, and that's seven and a quarter, rich, seven and three-quarters inch rain in a 24-hour period, which we've had a few recently. The small project approach basically captures a two-year storm event, which is 90% of our storms. In the normal year, is two and a half inches-ish, something like that.
In a 24-hour.
Yeah, in a 24-hour period, yeah. Now, July is the wettest month of the year, always has been, probably always will be, so no exception this year as well, just because of the thunderstorms. But normally, a two-inch rainfall within a 24-hour period is not common throughout the rest of the year, but yes. That's a two-year storm event, and that, again, is like about 90% of our storms, it would capture that quantity of water.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
And that's a huge difference between the stormwater, full project stormwater 100-year event, which would be basically three times the amount of quantity that you need to deal with versus a small projects component, which would be a two-year storm.
Yeah, our understanding was basically this area is all gravel right now.
It's not increasingly ab蚀 on that, yes.
Again, our attempt here is to make the situation a little bit better. He'd like to do some improvements. We understand, you know, the building's been there, was put in for stormwater requirements there. As things happen, there's creeps here and there as far as what's put down and stones moved around and so on and so forth. But now, at this time, we have an opportunity to at least, at least put in some sort of stormwater facility that would, would again, cover up 90% rain for what's there, what's there from the beginning of those. Putting underground infiltrating it.
Your alternative position to... Any other discussion?
I assume the stormwater would be staff review.
Yeah, I would still review once the board, yeah, correct.
You want to make a motion to approve the waiver on land development in lieu of them going ahead with the stormwater requirement?
Second.
Okay, next motion.
What?
That's...
I thought you made the motion.
I didn't. I made a motion to that we approve a waiver and relief from the land development process under chapter 98 in lieu of them continuing doing the project as a small sewer project.
That's second.
So the motion is made in second, does anybody say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, gentlemen.
Look at these girls.
Yeah. Applications there. Have a good evening, thank you very much for your time, gentlemen. And ladies.
Okay, our next guest tonight is Randall L. Martin-Giller. JTK Trades LLC, is that you or that's it, my guest? Okay, well, please form the board what you'd like board to do tonight.
Okay, this is the last meeting. We had whatever the, do yous have copies of... Do you do? Okay. Okay, we had purchased a lot along Drytavern Road, and the address is 1507 Drytavern Road. That had an old blue house on, with some old buildings, and we had four of them all down a couple months ago. And Jared, who's the owner of the JTK, has a small pressure washing business, and he would like to purchase the lot from us. And what he's asking is, due to the finances of, you know, him buying, being a young business guy, he's asking if it would be okay if he could just put a 60-by-60 stone in a parking lot for now. And what originally was there that was stoned in was 4,534 square feet, and what he's asking is 4,225 feet, which is actually less than what was originally there on the property. And considering that this parcel is zoned, light industrial, that is, you know, like, I don't know if yous were given the letter that he wrote. Yes. You know, if yous wanted me to read it, I could, or maybe yous will read it.
Well, it seems to me, it seems to me you're asking for a delay having to do the land development subdivision and development process until you want to put a permanent building there.
Yes, that's correct.
And I think, Mike, you had met with them, I think, in Levi, because they're just putting a shed there, they actually need zoning approval to put the shed there without having a permanent building there, so.
Right, I didn't know if I was supposed to say about the shed tonight, or if that's with the zoning.
Yeah, it's actually, the reason that you're here tonight would be for the waiver of the land development for the shed to be placed on the property. So that's what we had discussed. Planning commission did review this, and they believe that it met the conditions for waiver. They do acknowledge that they have to go to the zoning hearing board because they're placing an accessory structure prior to the actual principal building going in, and they felt that at this point, the waiver of land development made sense, provided they do come back at a future date once the primary building comes back, in addition to going to the zoning hearing board for relief of that section of the zoning ordinance.
And we could, we could grant approval on a waiver with the condition that, you know, permanent building, building permits are taken out until September is done. It seems to me like they wanted, once they used it, they may not be sure what building they need, or wants to go that far, and if they went into one, the building's down, they probably could have used it as it is, so it would be not increasing the previous area.
Yeah, they do get credit for what was there before, so their net increase is actually zero.
So if it'd be required to get a zoning permit to place a shed there, would they need a building permit? Okay, so you could say the condition of relief or waiver of the land development and the condition upon them not needing a building, I won't say need a building permit, permanent buildings, but then they would be required to...
Right. And at that point too, they would also need to come back for a land development approval because it would be a non-residential structure in addition to needing a building permit.
Well, I'll make a motion that we grant the approval for the waiver of the land development process under chapter 98, with the condition that no building permit would be given on the property until it does go through a land development process. Okay, motion was made in second, does anybody say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, thank you very much.
We pulled up on the bills.
We done worked on it, thank you. Carol doesn't even have to take her time out of her schedule, she's happy.
Okay.
Thank you.
For the record, minutes will be in next month's packet, so we don't have the minutes for a live session at this time. We did review the bills, next on our agenda is reports. We have the roadmaster's report in their packet. Some of the reasons we, our costs are so high this past month were because of the tar and shit that was done on some of the roads. Also, is there a top coat put on Black Creek?
Yes.
Shall we address the, this, we just have a letter from Landis Deck who had a contract to reclaim Oakland Drive from Naples Road to Bullwood Road. The contract, we have them, had them, had to be required to finish by...
I shouldn't pull it out, but it's prior to the end of, I think it was the end of September.
They are requesting an extension on that contract completion date. They're saying the last two, three weeks have been so wet, they just haven't been, they've all behind. And they, our contract, we should, still should hold them responsible for getting done this paving season.
Right, and that's what they're saying, that. They're saying that, they just want to, they want an extension to be able to pave by the end of the official paving season this year. Because our contract was earlier than the end of the paving season.
We want it done right, it's too wet. I don't want to force you to read a deadline just because it's unusual.
For winter.
Right, yes.
Typically, the paving season ends at...
It's in September early, I think October somewhere in there, I can't recall when exactly the paving is. Is it the end of October?
Well, that's for...
I know certain treatments were early, right.
And then base you can do, very good.
Yeah, right, that was there.
And that's a base application.
So you could actually...
You could go later, okay.
But still before winter.
Or ounces of material, compound of material oil, it's going to be challenge rolling that out.
Right, right.
Okay, we need a motion to grant them an extension to their contract conditionally.
I make a motion that we grant the extension to the completion date for Landis Deck and Sons, or the work on the project to be done in the township.
Okay, we have the motion to grant the extension to their contract date, in one second, does anybody say aye?
Aye.
Okay, I'll count it, engineers' reports.
Okay, I have a copy of my engineer report August 9th. I have, there are seven items listed on page four of my report, five through seven, that we already covered previously with the guests. So action tonight would be item number one, Sun Valley Campground land development, extension of time for review of the land development until November 13th, 2018. Item two is the John R. Zimmerman land development on Reading Road, financial security release dated August 7th in the amount of $74,443.3. Item three is the Boulder Hill Properties Andrews Way, issue a, issue a release recommendation for the maintenance security in the amount of $36,062.17. And item number four is the George Lee Stormwater Project, financial security recommendation of August 7th in the amount of $5,273.70.
Okay, are there any questions? Only the four items that are listed for action. The Boulder Hill, is that a complete?
That's the completion of the dedication, which was stated, some clean out, some inlets out there on Andrews Way, and that has been completed.
The John Zimmerman, this takes some considerations, not putting one building up.
Those are the, that's different John Zimmerman, yeah, so this is the Turkey Barnes out on, behind the Archer Place on 625.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the, the action by the township engineer.
I make a motion that we approve the actions of the Sun Valley Campground, John R. Zimmerman, Boulder Hill Properties, and George Lee, as the engineer has presented in the packet.
Okay, we have a motion in second, does anybody say aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
The SEO's report, we have the zone officers' report. Anything you want to add? Any...
I don't have.
Okay. Do you have a motion to approve their boards?
I make a motion that we approve, we approve the roadmaster engineer SEO zoning and solicitor items as discussed and presented.
Okay, the motion is made to approve the reports, in one second, does anybody say aye?
Aye.
Okay, you have a copy of the parking rec minutes, in fact, I have two copies, one of this one and we all have to... Sorry about that.
Make a tree, Sam.
Any comments on their minutes? Okay, we had a person resign from the parking rack, the parking rack is a committee of seven, and last month at this meeting, it was announced there was a vacancy, and I know Arthur specifically mentioned here that anyone was interested in filling that vacancy, they should contact township, we did have a resident of our township go out of volunteer form, so you have to, we'll tell you if they want to fill that vacancy.
I make a motion that we fill that vacancy for the volunteer positions for the parking rack board with one that's war.
That's it. Okay, we have a motion to fill vacancy, and one seconded, the voters say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, before I go to the zone text, is there anything else that we're missing? So, under new business, back about a year and a half ago, this board asked the planning commission to review the tax amendment of the tax, zoning tax requirements in commercial districts. We had rezones in property and noticed that some of the permitted uses in our commercial districts, they had a lot of uses under permitted by right, and it seemed like our neighboring townships had less things permitted as a right and more things as a special exceptions. And even the Lancaster County Planning Commission within made their recommendation concerning the rezoning, they suggested that we look at our zoning text and see if we should make some changes there, we did, we asked the planning commission to review the three zoning districts, neighborhood commercial, highway commercial, and light industry. And with the zoning officers' help, they collected a lot of other township zoning districts regulations, and put together one that's similar with theirs, they now presented it to the board with their recommendations to move on it. The next step to this board would be to forward it to the Lancaster County Planning Commission for their comment, for their review, and then their comments. So if there's anything, I think there's one item we do want to discuss, but this time would be to add any comments that we might have. And the comment that I had under highway commercial, highway commercial district, permitted uses includes D, manufacturing, working, processing, assembling, and or packaging of wood and wood products, was supposed to discuss the planning commission and thought it should be under special exception, not as permitted use. Because highway commercial, the permitted uses in neighboring townships are more like what's the rest of the list, these banks, financial institutions, emergency services, municipal uses, non-impact home base, professional offices and clinics, and something like a manufacturing facility, processing wood or metal, did not seem like it fit in the same category as banks and professional offices and clinics as permitted. It seemed to fit one to the special exception where you had car washes, commercial garages, farm equipment, sales and repairs, garden supply stores, hospitals, lumber and building supplies, sales and services, so it was the recommendation of the planning commission that that D had maybe to be moved down to under special exception.
Farming is to be allowed in highway commercial, I didn't see anything that. Homebody allows it, so special exception.
Farming?
Yeah.
I'm assuming there are automatics that we were.
Yeah, I thought, I thought it used to say.
It was, no.
Well, I think that should be included in.
Doing the thing that is.
It is in light industry, yeah, okay, or that should be added and also to highway, highway commercial. Yeah, it's in, it's in neighborhood commercial and it's in light industry, and it was somehow we missed in. So we have two changes we wanted to make in highway commercial, one, we want to add permitted uses, and the agriculture and later farm buildings subject to 11038, and we want to move manufacturing to special exception.
What's the whole process behind making a special exception instead of permitted uses?
Which, which one?
Oh, there were like thirty-four of them before they were permitted.
Well, the, the permitted uses are permitted as a right, so they can just then get a building permit, and they have to reduce. The special exception is kind of a, you're not describing correctly, you could say it's permitted if you meet these conditions, permitted, it's permitted for you meet conditions. So it is permitted as a right if they meet conditions. Now, the only thing it does though, does allow the neighbors to have a chance or neighboring parties, because as a special exception, it requires the zoning hearing board hearing, so it does allow the community to have an opportunity to. Put input, yeah, committed as a right, the neighboring properties have the say. And typically, if they meet the conditions, it generally is.
I guess that's where I would go unless it, most of these, and the special exceptions, now, at the end of the day, they're going to be permitted any week after.
Yeah. Well, be sure, they just have to prove they meet certain standards, form standards. I think we were surprised that the other townships in, even in our Lancaster district, had very few permitted as a right in some of these things, most of them were, were under a special exception, meaning again, it just, it just allows the neighbor and landowners an opportunity to have a little more say, or at least express any concerns they have.
And with a special exception too, that you can, zoning board can impose reasonable conditions, which they can't do on the permitted uses, so a lot of times, the zoning board might want to impose like hours of operation, you know, limit some of those hours, the car washes and things like that, so they're not open in 24 hours for safety reasons, traffic, etc., so they can impose reasonable conditions on that use.
There's something else that's, that's, we can actually do in that, that's very big, heights of that 20 feet, we just change the one on the.
Yeah, well, we did on the farm. Now would be the time to do it, you're right, but we did on the cars wreck and the ag one, ag two. Is there any reason why we would restrict the height 20 feet on commercial blocks? Would you like to see that changed?
I, I, there's a reason why you shouldn't, you know.
Okay, we have three changes. Now, when this comes back, when the Lancaster County Planning Commission does their review and comments, they'll forward that back to the planning commission, which will be a review, and then come back to us, and then we'll have a chance to take that back to them, so this is the part one, but who are you going to get as close as?
Excuse me, Liz, do we not need to send it to them in an ordinance form?
Yeah.
Yeah, see, I don't.
So, I was going to.
Yeah.
You'll interview eventually, but I know you guys were still talking about changes, what we need to do is authorize our office to place it in ordinance format, and then send it to the Lancaster County.
With those three changes.
And does it, that, it, once, once it's in the ordinance form, it would go to our planning commission and the Lancaster County planning, that's right, okay, yeah.
But am I right, we still could.
You could send it back to them.
No, once, once we have the process adopted, if we saw something minor or we wanted to change, we could change it at that point.
Once it goes to Lancaster County Planning Commission, if we make a substantive change, you know, we may, yeah, if it's a typo, it doesn't have to go back, but if you're like, you know, changing the speed, the height, content, whatever, we have to send it back to Lancaster County.
Well, I, I think that I was feeling like, if you try to make it perfect, we'd never get anything better. And I think with zoning officers' help, we made a huge improvement to it. And with the three change, changes here tonight, it continues to, I think the act also improves it so. I guess you're saying then you ought to be just.
Right, it's not, it's not like you're going to advertise it yet though either, if you want to send it back to Lancaster County Planning Commission, it's just going to take, you know, we're not going to, with the one zoning amendment that we did, you want our office to authorize it, you know, we advertised it during that review period, so you were spending that money, but you don't, you're not going to be out any money by sending it to the planning commission, we're not going to advertise it until you're ready to, you know, just.
But no matter what we do, their office has to prepare it in the ordinance time, so.
Anything else? Yeah.
Twenty-eight, twenty-eight.
Yeah, that was twenty-eight.
Don't you thought, you know, so, make the same. Pretty good?
Pretty good?
Well, I'll make the motion that we authorize this lister to prepare the zoning text changes into an ordinance, to be forward to the Lancaster County Planning Commission for their comment, for the reviewing comment. That's it. Okay, the motion's made, seconded, the voters say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, do you have anything else? If you want to adjourn the meeting.
I like it here. You don't like it here?
I make a motion to adjourn at eight twenty-five, and seconded, the voters say aye.
Aye.